Right now, so we should be good.
All right, and is there anyone in the lobby that needs to let in?
Uh, there is not, and Matthew and Dylan, thanks for joining. You should have presenter permissions. So you should be good to go when the time comes. Thanks.
That's great, thanks.
All right, I'm gonna get started. My name is James Pepper on the Chair of the Cannabis Control Board. Today is Tuesday, August 26th, 2025. It's 10:04 AM and I call this special meeting of the Board to order. So I think on the agenda, I don't see anyone in the waiting room or that's joined from the public. So I'm actually gonna move the public comment period to the end of the meeting, right in between the kickoff and the executive session. And then we'll just, you know, we have an executive session today. It's unrelated to the Bud Tender Education kickoff, and we'll adjourn after that executive session. So I thought before anything else that we should start with some introductions. I thought, you know, the people that are most relevant to this conversation, I think, are Olga, Kyle, Julie, and Melissa, and then we'll have Tamori side introduce them. So I'm James Pepper. I'm the Chair of the Board. I've been here since 2021, and we've got the inaugural commissioners. I'll kick things over to Julie.
Good morning. I, Julie Holbert, another commissioner, also here since 2021.
Kyle Harris rounding out the board. Been here since 2021.
And Olga.
Well, I'm going to break this trend and say that I've been here since 2023. So we have a little variety in here, and I'm the Executive Director of the Board and very happy and privileged to work with this lovely Board and the rest of our amazing staff.
And Melissa, would you mind just saying hello? If you're not feeling well, you don't have to turn your camera on, but maybe just say hello in what your role is.
That's okay. My camera's disabled. Oh, no, now it's, now it's, oh, Patrick enabled it for. Hi, I'm Melissa. I'm the Deputy Director of Licensing, Acting Director. I started with the Medical Marijuana Program in 2020, when it was still part of the Department of Public Safety, and then was absorbed by the Board with the program when it came over in 2021.
Yeah, and the licensing team administers the medical use program as well. So Melissa has taken an outsized role in preparing the Board for this new medical use endorsement. So I thought after introductions, I should probably just lay out some of the purpose of this meeting. Oh, sorry. Could you guys do your introductions, please?
Yes, of course. Linda Clumpers, Clinical Pharmacologist, working on cannabinoid research and education since 2006. Matthew and Dylan.
Hello, Matthew Green. I have a PhD in Psychology with a focus on Behavioral Neuroscience and Pharmacology, where I worked on the Endocannabinoid System, Stress Physiology, and Risk Factors for Psychiatric Conditions. I was also Senior Manager and Scientist for a licensed producer in Canada and worked on a medical patient advocacy group. We support 16,000 patients, and we do research and education for them.
Hi, I'm Dylan. I'm an Instructional Designer. We'll be working with Tamori on this project, and I also work at the University of Vermont.
Great, really nice to meet you guys. Thank you for being here, and you know, thank you for saying yes to this project. I was just gonna do a little bit of level setting before we turn to a presentation. But really, the purpose of this meeting is to begin to address what I consider a foundational problem, not unique to Vermont, but really across the country. We know that people have been using cannabis medicinally for millennia. I think we're up to 40 medical use states, 41 if you include DC. There's over 30,000 healthcare providers that are authorized to recommend medical cards. There's over 6 million registered patients in the country. And yet, as a consequence of Schedule I status, consumers, and particularly new consumers or consumers with complex medical histories, have very little information about how to navigate using cannabis for symptom relief. And then you add layer on the complexity that there's very little in the way of standardization from state to state with respect to testing and labeling. You know, this is a complex botanical that kind of varies in its profile, even the same strain from one harvest to the next. And then economic pressure, as we've seen, tends to drive the industry towards higher and higher potency products. Healthcare professionals, generally speaking, are unwilling to talk to patients about cannabis use, let alone give them any advice about product selection or dosing, and methods of delivery or drug interactions. We also know from our most recent patient surveys and ones that we see from across the country that the primary source of information about cannabis comes from bud tenders. This certainly isn't surprising to me. You know, if you're going to a restaurant, you usually ask the waiter or the server for a recommendation. However, with cannabis, given the number of factors that can affect how a person might respond to a certain product, you know, the stakes are quite a bit higher in this area, particularly when you're dealing with a, with patients who by definition are living with a serious medical condition. So we've heard calls from the Legislature, we've heard calls from patients, and you know, frankly, from bud tenders themselves, that they would like to see increased educational opportunities. And, you know, I see that as a great opportunity for consumer education and harm reduction. When contemplating creating the medical use endorsement, the Legislature actually mandated in statute that any retail employee that's gonna be interacting with patients needs to have an enhanced training certification regarding product selection and dosing and modes of administration, side effects. This all, you know, sounds good on paper when you're passing a bill, but you know, the problem that you immediately run into is how do you find evidence-based information about cannabis use that's objective? You know, there's thousands of papers that get published every year about cannabis and trying to evaluate their academic rigor and their objectivity, and then trying to convert that into a training module that can be digestible and deployed in real-life situations is not something that the Board is particularly suited to do. But fortunately, there are a number of researchers that have dedicated their professional careers to just that purpose. And Dr. Clumpers, as far as I'm concerned, is the foremost expert in clinical pharmacology of cannabinoids. And we have asked her, and she's graciously, graciously accepted, to help us develop a curriculum for increased bud tender education. And this is our kickoff meeting to make sure that that curriculum and that program aligns with the goals of the Board and the broader prevention strategies in the state. So I think that's, by way of an introduction, long-winded, but I think that's a good level set. And Julie, Kyle, I don't know if you want to add anything to that. I know we've been talking about this for almost two years now. So, you know, everything has been said at one point or another. Certainly want to give you an opportunity to chime in.
I would just add, Pepper, that we have been talking about how important it is to have a thorough education for, since the very beginning, maybe one of our first meetings. So it's, it's wonderful to get to this point now.
Nothing more to add. That sounds great. Thank you both.
All right.
So we're sharing the screen now?
I think that's the right move for now, yes.
Okay, good. Everybody can see it? Making sure, okay, good.
Yep.
Yes, you already set the stage, so this is probably a little bit redundant. Just to be sure, we wanted to confirm the curriculum, audience, and the goal. As defined actually in the RFP and our agreement. So the target audience of the course for now is the bud tenders focused on the medical cannabis retailer stores in Vermont. And the goal of the course is to provide the objective and evidence-based cannabis education for these employees to improve the communication with the patients seeking cannabis for medical or medicinal purposes particularly. So any comments or questions about this before we move on?
No, I think the main thrust of this legislative directive really was one to, there was no education requirements for the bud tenders in the purely medical-only stores. And we've changed that. We said that they, that they need to have an education curriculum. We've changed that in our rulemaking. And then the new kind of universe of people really are the, the retail stores that opt for a medical use endorsement. And then, you know, any of their bud tenders who are reasonably, reasonably gonna be interacting with patients need this enhanced training. So the population, yes, is the, the medical use endorsed retail employees that are interacting with patients. And I think the rules say that they need to have at least one available in case a patient comes in.
Yeah.
At all times, and, and then any of the employees that are, any of the bud tenders that are just at the standalone medical dispensaries, of which there's only three, so it's not a huge population.
Okay, for now.
For now. It may increase, yeah.
Good. And then moving on, just to make sure we're all talking about the same thing. Our question for, for the state, for CCB, what does success of this product, project look like for you?
And I'll, I'll start, and Julie, Kyle, Olga, Melissa, anyone feel free to weigh in. Isabel, of course. And, you know, for me, success is, a, I mean, there's things that we're not gonna be able to really measure. Like, are we seeing, I mean, you can measure these things, but linking them to this education program might be difficult. Like, are we seeing fewer adverse events, you know, fewer, you know, cannabis use disorder, you know, reported cannabis use disorder, fewer highway fatalities related to cannabis, DUI cannabis? Those are gonna be hard to just say that this education curriculum resulted in those statistics. But for me, really having bud tenders know where that line is between providing information about the products versus providing medical advice, that is certainly, you know, that to me is a very critical component of this education. I don't know how well our current education curriculum focuses on that. I think that, you know, having a clear, bright line between those two is gonna be important for me. I'll, I'll turn things over to Julie and Kyle, I'm, because I can go on all day about this.
I, I would agree that that is the most important success factor, having the, the bud tenders know what the appropriate level of information that they can give out is, and perhaps even where to direct people when, when a client is asking more than they can share. So if somebody is asking about drug interactions, prescription drug interactions, having the bud tenders know where they should direct that person for the right information or for where they should be getting the appropriate guidance.
Yeah, wanna, wanna echo what Julie and Pepper both alluded to, you know, giving bud tenders the, the confidence to talk about these things with, with kind of conviction, instead of always feeling like they're a little worried about what is being said or offered, and, and again, how to direct to other resources when they've kind of hit that moment where it's crossing that threshold. And of course, this is a gray area considering, you know, the state of things. But if we can move that needle even a little bit to more clarity, I think that's really what I'm hoping for.
And yeah, I think, go ahead, Julie, please.
I, I was just gonna add cannabis use, particularly for medical reasons, is emotional for a lot of people. And so removing some of the emotion for the bud tenders and allowing them to give sort of just being very pragmatic about the information they give, I think would be, is another element of success.
And then another one that's very hard for me to measure is increasing consumer education. I mean, what we're seeing is the bud tender is the gatekeeper to a lot of cannabis knowledge for consumers. And I, I mean, to me, having, you know, people that are trying cannabis for the first time or the first time in 30 years and are a little bit nervous about it, and having a very reliable source of information so that the consumer feels like they've been given appropriate information, you know, that can actually help them make good choices. So again, very difficult to measure that, but I think, you know, having an informed consumer base with reliable, evidence-based information is a really important outcome of this. You know, I think we know that it's gonna happen through increased education. Measuring it is a different story, but I think, you know, it's an inevitable outcome of having better education.
Yeah, yeah, so I hear a few things. There are, there are ideal goals that are not realistic for this particular case with regards to the adverse events and, and traffic accidents, for example, which is probably part of a larger plan to implement, but focusing on what we can do. I hear things like less emotion, more objectivity, knowing what, how to direct patients to information sources that other qualified people are better suited to talk about. More knowledgeable bud tenders, more confident bud tenders. And this is all, of course, something that we can measure, for example. Well, between states is gonna be hard, but for example, prior to implementation, during implementation, and after two years, for example, and see what the difference is in knowledge level and all the factors that you mentioned. And then you also bring in the patient and wondering if the patient is benefiting from this too, which is something we could, in theory, also investigate. We could also already do that during the implementation by investigating, well, the real patients or mystery shopper patients by sending them to the educated bud tenders and to the buttons who have not yet received their education, for example. So there are various things that we can think of of how we can measure whether this is indeed a successful implementation of the project.
That's great. Yes, thank you for summarizing that for us. I did, I forget to, you know, Melissa's been with the program from, from the beginning, or at least from since 2020. Melissa, are, are there, are there six success factors that you'd like to see?
Yeah, I, I think that standardization and consistency is important also. If I'm a patient going into a dispensary and saying, these are my symptoms, what type of product should I be looking for to help with that? I should be getting the same answer in, in dispensary A as I am getting in dispensary B. So I think that consistency across the board is super important for people also.
Yeah, yeah. And I see, I see a few issues there, and I'm not sure if this is the right place to discuss this, but bud tenders are, of course, different between, there are differences between people, there are also differences between dispensary management, and, and that is something that I think we're not addressing with this curriculum. But it's certainly something very important that we need to talk about.
Yes, it was on my list of things. You know, what I, what I hope, one of the goals is, is empowering bud tenders to identify people that either shouldn't be using cannabis and give them the, the kind of rationale for why they shouldn't be using cannabis, which may be counter to the kind of profit maximization feeling of the management, you know? But you know, people with heart disease or schizophrenia, you know, pregnant breastfeeding, you know, just help the bud tender explain the risks of cannabis use with those populations.
Yeah, and, and be able to, yeah, to make them confident to discuss these things with their healthcare provider so that they can eventually
Right.
put them on the right track.
Right.
Yeah, I think that we have a fairly good answer now to what, and, and also, yeah, it maybe requires some, some thinking about the exact phrasing, and then we can share that with the CCB and discuss about the final, the final success picture.
Yeah.
Okay, good.
Success also, I should just say, is, to me, you know, I would, I know we're focusing on people that are reasonably gonna be interacting with medical patients. You know, that's a very small, narrow group of the Vermont population or consumer population in Vermont. You know, I would eventually like this training if it is kind of well-received and it is adding value to expand to just be our standard training for all bud tenders, you know, whether you're reasonably likely gonna interact with a patient or not, so.
Yeah, that's a good point, because the difference between recreational use and medicinal use is not always so clear. There are a lot of recreational shoppers, let's say, that actually do have medical symptoms. So it's, it's good to make that more uniform, probably. All right, and then shall we move on to more of the bud tender profile? And I think, Dylan, do you want to take this one on?
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, so as we're starting to think about what this will look like, I can click to, yeah, there we go. As we've been talking about what's sort of the need that we are trying to meet here, you know, as we've been talking about evidence-based knowledge, understanding the regulations, and then, you know, wanting to again equip, equip our students with those practical skills for, as we've been talking about, guiding patients safely, identifying health risks. So that's really what we're trying to meet here, you know, and then thinking about that, how do we want to meet it? So, you know, we've been thinking about how do we structure this as a series of short learning modules within the workshops here? And to have, yeah, the sort of modular content that covers sort of all of the, the topics and sequence here. We want to make sure that it's engaging and meets learners sort of where they are and with the learning styles that, that suit them best. So including a variety of multimedia, you know, auditory, visual, different interactive elements. And then, yeah, also including real-life examples and scenarios, which again is very important for this kind of like practical continuing education training. Really helps students make that connection between what they're learning and then how do they take that into, you know, their, their real life and their jobs and apply that. And then we also want to make sure that we include opportunities for Q and A with the experts, again, who are just, you know, a treasure trove of valuable information on that front, and that students will get a lot of value out of.
Yeah. Any questions about this?
It seems great. I mean, I think, yeah, I think you'll find that the bud tenders are coming at you with a whole, you know, range of different experiences, life experiences, you know, and being flexible and, you know, meeting, meeting people where they're at and trying to get people to kind of a minimum competency is great. I love the real-life examples and scenarios, because, you know, we know a single training, whether it's annual or biennial, is not gonna cover every, you know, real-life interaction that these people are gonna encounter, but, you know, at least trying to, you know, get them prepared for with some real-life scenarios will be very useful, I think.
Yeah, these people are typically not academically trained, and a lot of the online information is just dry facts. And, yeah, that's not really helping anyone. All right, I see that we, that the animation is funny here, but we'll move on.
I can take this slide and the next slide as well, as we're talking about, yeah, the, the exact course format, building off of that. So, you know, we are proposing to, to do this as sort of a live half-day workshop as specified in the contract, up to 60 participants per class, obviously exact numbers depending on, on enrollment for any given session. But live sessions to enable that face-to-face, you know, Q and A and discussion. And kind of speaking to what you were just saying about, you know, people coming in with different experiences. We want to have what we're calling a level assessment test, which is just a pre-test before the live session, so that, you know, we have that, that knowledge and, you know, our presenters can know sort of where people are coming from. Again, probably the range of experiences in any given cohort, but then they have that, that baseline and can, again, meet students where they're at. And then followed up, you know, after the session with a competency exam, which we would like students to take, you know, pretty immediately after. And then, again, as, as specified in the contract, this will be approximately four hours of, you know, concrete learning, which will encapsulate all of it, the presentations, you know, the, the modules, the Q and A time, and then building in both of these assessments, the, the pre-test and the, the post-test, the competency exam. I, I think this continues on the next slide, yeah. So getting in a little bit, reiterates a little bit here, but to some of the course contents. As specified, we want to do a pre-test. We want to do this approximately, you know, at least 24 hours prior to any live time. Again, so that we have a chance to review and, you know, analyze and know where people are coming from. During the actual trainings, we are anticipating having eight short modules, you know, 20 to 40 minutes each in total, you know, plus probably break times between them as, as necessary to cover all of the, all of the course topics. Again, as mentioned, having Q and A time to really get that, you know, real-life experience and also, you know, opportunities to clarify and dig in deeper, you know, et cetera. And then again, I stated a competency exam after, after that to, you know, gauge, did students really learn what we are, what we need them to learn, and can they get the, the certification here? And we're hoping to hold this about five times within the, that initial contract term as, as laid out.
Yeah.
That's great. And the initial contract term, I think, is 18 months?
Yes, that's correct.
And we have a renewal, so if we do see just a lot of interest in these courses, and they're all at capacity, and we need to go longer than five times, then we can renew the contract and add some more classes, kind of à la carte, as needed.
Yeah. Any questions?
Yeah, sorry. Yes, I have a question, and I'm sorry if I missed it while you were talking, Dylan. Are these live in person or are they live on, on a streaming, like Zoom?
Yeah, sorry. It was on the slide, and then I think I glossed over it. Apologies. We're anticipating these to be virtual, so live, live to have that face-to-face time, but not needing to gather everybody in, in one physical place at the same time.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. I think this, you know, looks, looks good as a start. Wondering about how we handle those that might not, you know, be able to pass on the first go-around? Is there any opportunity for asynchronous follow-up? Wondering your thoughts on that. I know that we've got some UVM instructor professors on the call. Just wondering how you would handle that component, and then maybe I'm getting a little ahead of myself. But from like a continuing learning education bit, as kind of the science and education around medical cannabis evolves, how, how can we handle that?
Linda, do you want to speak to that, or should I?
Oh, what you prefer? Okay, I'll go ahead. So, yes, for the retesting, that is something indeed that we wanted to discuss with you as well. We have some thoughts about it. We think there should be an opportunity for retesting if someone fails. Ideally, we can see on what points someone failed, and we can provide specific and maybe more in-depth information about those particular modules. We would like to discuss with CCB, but that, we will discuss it in a later slide. What the competency level should be, at the least. But, yeah, with failure, more training is, is required, and retesting is, is needed. And then you had a, a second question as well, Kyle?
It was just kind of, it's, it's made more forward-thinking, maybe even beyond the 18-month scope that we were alluding to. But, you know, all of us have some
All of us have some type of. Or in some type of profession where CLEs are a a part of continuing to learn how to to stay on top of the the most up-to-date information, how do we? How do we handle that moving forward? And again, I'm sure all of you have thought about this and I'm putting the cart before the horse, so to speak, but uh. Didn't want to lose my my thought while I had it.
I I can say that the contract uh contemplates one update to the course curriculum in the initial eighteen-month period. Um, the uh renewal. Contemplates an additional update to the curriculum, just to make sure it is, uh, you know. Incorporating all the most kind of up-to-date, you know, evidence-based information.
Yeah, so the the new students will receive the newest information and um. Uh, we would need to discuss probably between the CCB and Canify whether it's. Uh, useful to provide the entire course every time for refresher. Uh, or whether we have a particular refresher course that summarizes some of the points.
Yeah, so long story short is, I think, Kyle, we are able to kind of design. The those aspects of the program the way we want, I don't think we've even decided um between the three of us. Whether this blood tender enhanced training. Requires an annual update or a partial update after a year, whether it be every two years, I think our current blood tender education. Is a two-year requirement.
Yeah.
Yep, you're right, I'm just asking the questions as they pop into my head, thank you.
No, it's great. No, I mean, that's the point of this, is for us to kind of think through the decision points, whether we have to decide them today or not, but just make sure we have them all on the table.
Yeah, and of course, we can do in-between testing as well to see um. Yeah. How much uh is sticking? Okay, uh so uh any other questions on the format?
I think this is on a later slide, I got a little bit of advanced preview. But I really like the idea of having a certificate at the end, and I think that's. You know, for people that have completed the competency exam, and we're. Not totally atypical, but uh. For our bud tenders. You get licensed to work in the industry and not licensed to a specific retail establishment. So you can move between them as long as you're, as long as you've been trained and having this is part of your, essentially your resume, but having the certification. Um, will add a lot of value to the people that take this course. So, um, and the course is of course voluntary, so I think, you know, that's one incentive to get people in and to complete it, so. Um, I think having a competency exam generally and then having a certification that says that you passed the test is really an important piece.
Yeah. Thank you.
Yeah.
Um, alright, then we will move on on the content, um, and Matthew will take over now.
Hi, yes. Uh, so we have. Discussed and envisioned a minimum of uh eight modules. Each module will cover fundamental principles, core concepts, and provide an overview of the scientific literature, um, obviously with an emphasis on clinical trial results. Each module will be accessible to a broad audience. And provide a level of detail that will be useful to people with advanced science backgrounds to make sure it's engaging and stimulating. And um. We feel confident in administering all these topics and subtopics, um, that said. The advanced event reporting, it's my understanding that there's not a system in place in Vermont currently that allows for this. Um, so I think we would need to understand the. Who, what, where, why behind events adverse event reporting in order to. Administer a training program that would allow them to effectively execute that to ensure patient safety.
So I'm thinking that we may want to go through these with the board one at a time, but I will speak to the adverse event reporting specifically. Um. So I I wrote these uh topics and I wrote them based upon what we've seen the legislature most concerned about uh with respect to. Um, the types of information that blood tenders are generally the gatekeepers of, um. And uh so this was not meant to be an exhaustive list, these are the things that I thought were most pertinent, but maybe there's others, um. But on adverse event reporting, um, you know, we had one pesticide issue. That uh we only really learned about uh because that person was feeling. Bad, uh, and he called the only number that he could find on our website. And told us about it and it led to um us, you know, tracking down the products and pulling them off the shelves and, you know, taking administrative actions to to deal with it. Um. You know, I would like bud tenders to be able to identify. Uh, or be able to communicate to customers what an adverse event. Might look like, you know, if you're feeling nauseous or you have vomiting or you're convulsing. That's not a regular effect of cannabis and you need to know um that you're probably having an adverse event. And you should report it to the CCB so that we can kind of follow up, um, or, I mean. Maybe you should go to the hospital first or whatever the appropriate kind of intervention is, but certainly um. The more we can learn about it at the board, the more we can um, you know, take the appropriate steps to make sure no one else is uh affected. Um, so, you know, I know that, you know, I think the FDA has like MedWatch or something like that for adverse events for pharmaceuticals or for other things, but. That doesn't exist here, but I think there should be some training at the bud tender level. So they can communicate to patients what you should expect, what you should not be expecting, if you're experiencing those things, you're not expecting what to do about it.
Yeah. So it looks like six and eight can actually be merged kind of, and then for eight, for adverse event reporting, we need to um. Make sure that we have the whole uh flow chart in place of what happens, patient. Gets adverse events, um, and is not sure if it's cannabis-related, what to do next, and then we make a flow chart on. Uh, who to report to.
Right, yeah.
And what to do. Okay.
So we can further flesh that out as, but uh that is that enough of a general direction?
Yeah, yeah.
Yes.
I think so. I think so, and then for the other um uh items you said you want to discuss with the board still. We can, of course, make some proposals on physiological effects of cannabinoids, okay, um, how deep into detail do you want to go about the? And the cannabinoid system, things like that, product selection, what to do, what not to do.
Right.
Yeah, okay.
Um, product selection, I mean, I I would love if bud tenders, and I know many of them do this anyway, but. Are able to communicate to patients about how to read the label, what's on the label, what to expect on a on a label of a regulated product versus maybe a product that's not regulated.
Yeah.
Um, how to find and read a COA if they want to.
Absolutely, and what it is, yeah.
And what it is, um. And um, you know, certainly about. I guess kind of. Dosing protocols and modes of administration, what the. You know, the duration of products are, what the kind of onset might be, and and uh. I I I mean, I know some of these are self-explanatory, but it's nice for me to just say them out loud, yeah, um. Think uh drug-drug interactions, you know, certain. Certain drugs are synergistic with cannabis, I think that some opiates have synergistic effects with uh THC and cannabinoids, um. Just being able to make sure that they can note that for people, uh I think there's some known drug-drug interactions um beyond just opiates.
Yeah.
Um, that, you know, if someone does say I'm on these six medications and one of them. Is a known. As a known interaction with cannabis, might be worth having a bud tender. Be able to say, well, that is, you know, that is in, has a known drug interaction with cannabis, you should consult your, you know, healthcare professional before using cannabis.
Probably safest tools, always.
Always say that.
Uh, consult, uh, yeah, the pharmacist or physician, yes.
Um, risks, common side effects, I think, um. You know, that's a really important one, the the. You know, potential um interactions with schizophrenia, pregnancy and breastfeeding, um. Certainly, I think, you know, one that. Might seem basic, but I think is an important one is safe storage, you know, have uh bud tenders be able to talk about. Safe storage with their customers, maybe like have them a checklist, I mean. One thing that we're envisioning with this program is that if a pa- if a new patient person has never tried cannabis before. Wants a consultation with a bud tender that has an advanced training. That they'll have that opportunity and maybe there can be a checklist of things, topics that they should or shouldn't cover with that patient to make sure that, you know, they're. Getting. Prepared for what to expect.
Definitely, and does the botender also have access to a physical checklist to give to the patient?
That would be great.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean.
Yeah, not just concepts, but the tools needed to deliver those concepts.
Yeah, right.
Pepper, would it be valuable, do you think, in either the drug-drug interactions or risk and common side effects to address? The cannabis hyperemesis syndrome or cyclical vomiting? As a as a risk that people should be educated about?
I absolutely think so, and one of the reasons I say that, you know, I know it's controversial, um. But um. You know, it's there, people are starting to see more of it in the emergency rooms.
Mm-hmm.
And uh, you know. People that use cannabis frequently probably don't think that it's related to cannabis if they're experiencing. Hypremesis syndrome. And for the emergency room doctors and others to have something that they can point to or to have a little kind of nugget of information in the consumer's mind about this risk. Um, I think it's just, you know, it helps people understand that this is a. Rare but possible side effect of cannabis.
Yeah, that's even seen in more and more teenagers.
Right.
Yeah. Good point.
And. You know, as part of the. Checklist, if that's the direction we move in, you know, some. I I don't even know, but you know, I I think one thing that I wanted uh incorporated. Some resources at the state that's. It's poison control or some prevention hotlines or whatever whatever else it might be useful. Um, information, you know, to give to a consumer if needed.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Yeah, we can discuss um those processes, they're important to have in place and, yeah. Uh, okay, good. Then we can go to the next slide, I also know it's getting closer to eleven o'clock and I know that Patrick and Dylan at some point had to drop off, so maybe it's just good to uh. At least give them the opportunity, uh, yeah. But um, so if you're leaving, thank you already in advance. Okay, good. And I'll move on to the next slide. Um, Matthew?
Yeah. So obviously, you know, we were talking about this earlier, I think Kyle brought up some important questions, um, he was just on the ball and ahead of the slides. Um, but it's going to be important to establish um competency exams that. Ideally result in a certification and um but also what those, what that minimum threshold is. Um, and not only that, um, I guess as we move forward. Uh, what does recertification look like? How often should that happen? Is there an opportunity for continued education? And. Administering a program that allows for. That continued education, so if there's an abbreviated recertification, there should still be Q and A opportunity for them to learn. New content or the most uh up-to-date information about the cannabis science. Um, so, you know, this is where. An ongoing dialogue is important in terms of what that competency looks like, what are the minimum thresholds? And Canify has a number of ideas about. Uh, where to take this, but of course. Um, this open dialogue is important for aligning in terms of what we're, what are the expectations for bud tenders? Such that we're implementing best practices and ensuring patient safety.
Yeah. So we will certainly. Provide a proposal if there if there are already some points of discussion or questions at this point, we can take them.
Julie, Kyle, Melissa, Olga, do Isabel, do you have any? Thoughts about any of this, or, you know, as Dr. Clover just said. You know, they. Have been in academia for a while, can probably give us some. Their thoughts about it, and we can just wait to to hear that.
I have an initial thought about the reexaminations after a failed exam, um, but I maybe tend to be a little. Harsh on this kind of thing, my initial thought is one reexamination, just because. We don't want, I feel like we don't want people who aren't really taking it seriously and taking in the information. To just do it a bunch of times until they get it so that they get the certification, but then they're not really retaining that information and helping people. Like. This is meant for them to do, so maybe that's just a little harsh on my, on my end, I would say. One exam, one reexam, but.
We want to ensure competency, so that involves, you know, a minimum standard without being necessarily overly stringent, where they're not all PhD academics, but at the same time. Um, that's where the. Idea of like a certification comes in handy, because if they have to delay their next session. A few months in order to take another uh kick at the can, um, then they might be incentivized to. You know, learn that information, pay attention the second time around so that they're not delayed another three months, um, if it does hold some intrinsic value to their profession.
Yeah, I I would, I would just add that, you know, of course, just like with any state, we have bud tenders from all walks of life, education. Reading proficiency levels, some that have gotten here from.
Right.
The legacy market versus, you know, just a convenient way to kind of. Hold a job after college, I don't, I don't, I don't know, but I I think um, you know, as Alyssa, Melissa alluded to, like, uh. At the forefront here is is making sure that the the medical patient gets the right information, I I don't necessarily want to see this as just. Um. Um. A a resume builder activity, although I do feel like it 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 should be one, uh but how do we differentiate um? The normal bud tender from somebody who is really um invested here and given. I haven't been in the academia world in over a decade, I'll I'll certainly rely on those that are a little closer to it um to at least provide a proposal before I give any more feedback.
I I'm not sure I'm quite as strict as Melissa, although I appreciate her, I appreciate her zeal for that. But I I was just trying to think back at some of the other sort of certification programs for people who are, you know, either handling. Sensitive information or doing a safety-sensitive function, you know, something that has um some real level of importance to it, and and I do agree that I think typically there is one or two. Opportunities to take a test and then a period of time where you can re-study and then take it again, so I think that's a good approach.
Okay.
Good. Okay, then uh maybe we'll. Look at the upcoming milestones for really the coming time. Um, uh first, of course, we are now in this kickoff meeting to review the goals uh and and the rules and requirements. Uh, then the next thing coming up is the content development, uh the format and the contact development. Um, which we have uh started and would like to submit this for uh initial review late September-ish. Um, the first version, of course, um, we um. We are now, we would like to make a course that is as good as possible, but also the bud tenders need to get trained last month. Uh, so knowing that we can make um um a a good version with all the appropriate content in there that we. Provide now, but along the, yeah, as the time goes by, we will uh improve on how this is presented uh to the bud tenders. Um, so that there is an opportunity for reviewing by the CCB, the VDH and um anyone else. Um, required in in, let's say, early October-ish or some sometime in October. Uh, so that we can give this first training in the late fall, which is of course um followed by reporting, which we will. Uh, get to uh on how. How this went.
That's great, yeah.
So that's upcoming, uh any questions on that?
And just, I know it's an aggressive timeline that's through no fault of yours or. Through the just administrative process. So, you know, I've I've asked that you move probably quicker than you wanted to, um, but uh. If you can. This is great, a great timeline for CCB purposes, but I don't want to um. Don't want to just hold you to an impossible uh standard.
Yeah. Uh, we will do what we can while being in touch with you, um, going back and forth. Um, and also prioritizing what do we need to work on first? Um, alright, then I'll just uh move on right now on. What you're actually mentioning, the whole risk management and mitigation, because there are some things uh that um. That are, yeah, going on right now, and Matthew, please jump in, of course, if you notice anything. Um, the, if there are content disputes about the curriculum, well, we are trying to avoid that, of course, by communicating on what we're going to include, communicating the proficiency levels, uh all these things. Uh, so, we will just need to um agree on a way of communicating between us and a frequency, um, so that that can. Um, so that that can be mitigated. Um, and. Yeah, Matthew, did you want to say something, I thought?
Sure. No, no, that's okay. If you want to go with that, I don't mind taking over if you want.
Oh yeah, you can take over too. Please go ahead.
Sure. Obviously, some of these overlap, um, in terms of say like deliverable timelines and curriculum content. Um, so really, we just see um, an ongoing dialogue. Um, as being important to mitigate these risks. Um, you know, these are areas of expertise for us. Um, but the important thing is that we're aligning on what we're trying to achieve and the specific content that we're trying to. Um, impart on the bud tenders and ultimately reach the patients. Um, tech issues, we don't see being um, a major concern. Given the formatting um, in which it will be administered. Um, and updated information, I think, you know, if we're looking at recertification, there's opportunity for. Continued growth and development for the bud tenders. Um, where we can update content, but they can also advance their learning um, through subsequent sessions. Um, assessments and Q and A. Um, and that's where having kind of a multimodal and comprehensive education approach is actually very valuable. Um, one issue that might arise is um, student is unable to successfully finish the competency exam. Um, but again, we want to maintain a certain um, standard. And I think having a mechanism in place where students can retake exams, have an opportunity to relearn material. I think that's um, they will, having shown some commitment to the process. Um, have the opportunity to not only learn, but earn their certification and exhibit those best practices. Um, in application. Um, students behaving inappropriately in class. We've talked about how this is an emotional topic, um, not just for patients, but also for bud tenders. Uh, you know, there's a lot of research that shows. Um, kind of, I guess, inconsistency in terms of perceived ability versus actual ability. Um, but given that, you know, we're experienced educators who have worked in classroom settings with patients with bud tenders. Um, will be able to set clear rules and expectations. For those uh, enrollees and rely on our experience to. Um, you know, I guess mitigate any inappropriate behavior that might arise during the training sessions. Um, if somebody is belligerent, you know, it might simply be that they get removed from the session. And have the opportunity to reengage in a later session. That's something that can be discussed. Um, I don't see that necessarily being the case, but extreme examples can happen. And then finally discrepancies between the knowledge level of students. Uh, who need to follow the same course. We've talked about how everybody's coming in with a different background. Um, it's important to make the content accessible to everybody. We've administered education to people of all levels, graduate level university students, to patients, to bud tenders. Um, to just, you know, people on the street, at least in my case, um. So there's also an ability to retake the course such that if somebody's coming in, um, knowing nothing. And they learn something, they'll have the opportunity to grow with their learning and later sessions. And there's opportunity for Q and A. So if they have specific gaps in knowledge and they want to address that with the trainers. Um, then they'll have every opportunity to do so. Um, so I see that as actually being more of a medium risk profile as opposed to a high risk profile. And I'll allow you guys to comment on any potential risks that aren't included here or. You know, issues with the mitigation process that you might envision.
I, I think this is great and very thoughtful and um, I, I will just for the benefit of the CCB side. Just say that we wrote into one of the tasks, um, that following each training. Uh, we're going to get a report back about, um, you know, recommendations for improvements, um, and. This will be somewhat of an iterative process and get kind of better over time as we identify recurring issues. Um, the only thing that, that, you know, just keeps on sticking in the back of my head, we talked about it quite a bit. And I think it's probably capturing the discrepancies between the knowledge levels of students is that there are um. Potentially accommodations that need to be made, you know, uh, for certain types of learning. Few people with certain types of learning disabilities or something along those, reasonable accommodations. And if you guys are just. Know the law on that, I'm not sure I know it all that well, but just being able to make accommodations for people with, you know, documented. Issues.
Yeah, we'll probably need to talk about uh, which uh, cases occur.
Right.
And uh, see what we can do.
Right.
Yeah.
Yes.
Everybody needs to get the opportunity to learn.
Right.
Okay.
And showcase that learning.
Right. So is there no questions? Yeah, exactly.
I don't, I'm not seeing anything. Yeah, go ahead, Melissa, sorry.
Great. Um, I was just wondering if that, um, you guys were talking about the pre, the pre-course assessment. Uh, for people that are signed up, is there an opportunity in that for people to flag if they have some kind of. Special accommodation that they would need so that it's up, known upfront?
That's, yeah, that's a great point. Absolutely. I think that's an opportune time to provide some kind of assessment of the needs. Of the learners, um, not just what their current level of uh, competency is, but um, what, how. Should they progress through this learning process? Um, and then to, then be responsive to that. Yeah, I think that, that's a great idea. It's something that should be implemented. And then through, you know, iteration, um, again, there's going to be a lot of learnings that come from this. Um, I think that it'll be an ongoing dialogue between the bud tenders and the course administrators to. Um, figure out what works and what doesn't work and to ensure that level of competency that does ultimately lead to. Patients having the best outcomes, right? So that's where that dialogue is important, not just with CCB, but also with the bud tenders.
I just had one question, um, continuing on with sort of the, the ADA accommodations. Is the testing, do you use a, a, a program for the testing, like an exam program or how? And we can talk about this at a later date, but um, some accommodations are very easy to provide through those that are built into a lot of existing programs.
Yes, that's right. I haven't been in those conversations, so I'll let Linda chime in, but there are very advanced programs. That allow for um, people with various limitations or disabilities to respond in kind. In ways that are accommodating to their circumstances.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, we can certainly, maybe it's too detailed for now, but we can certainly talk about this soon. Let's do that.
Great.
Anything else on this slide? CCB? No?
I would just add, uh, thank you, Matthew. I think this looks great. And I think even as you um, alluded to, kind of moving the last one to kind of more of a medium. As we kind of evolve and understanding. You know, what the proficiency level is. Again, I'm of the, of the persuasion that this isn't for every bud tender, right? So how do we find that sweet spot and, and determining who and, and what that kind of floor is for, um. You know, taking advantage of this opportunity. It's not a requirement that you do this. It's a, it's, it's a certification beyond the floor of your bud tender. Certification. So, um.
Yeah, my pleasure. Recognizing priorities too, like understanding a receptor signaling mechanism won't be as important as. Understanding the core principles for ensuring patient safety and administering resources and tools to, you know, execute on that.
Absolutely. And in my experience in doing, gosh, I don't know how many public meetings with this board. I, I, I hope that there are not students who behave inappropriately, so to speak, in terms of causing a scene. Um, I think what we, and you might find, and I'm sure you're familiar with, given this subject matter is, there's a lot of folks that. Um, are bringing their own experience to the conversation and are kind of hesitant to kind of learn something new. So I think we can kind of all uh, and, and take that for what it is versus the, um. As we've kind of alluded to, this emotional attachment to, to how I view medical cannabis. Um, and I think that's something that we can all kind of work through and learn from moving forward.
That, that's where experience really comes into play too, not just lecturing at bud tenders, but giving them the opportunity to have a discussion. Voice their opinions and then, you know, refer to the literature to understand, you know, truly what the science is saying. And what the best outcome is for the patient. Um, that's a, again, open dialogue is critical.
Absolutely. Thank you.
My pleasure.
Good. Okay, thank you, Matthew. Uh, we'll move on then to uh, exactly what you said, the evaluations of the courses. Uh, because um, um, we would actually need to look at the, at the subjective and the objective evaluations. Uh, subjective evaluations, meaning um, how did students actually experience the course? Um, that is very important to understanding their engagement, um, uh, in this. And then the objective evaluations, looking at how many participants did we have and how many of those. Did actually get a certification? So are we, uh, yeah.
Teaching to the right competency.
Teaching to the right competency indeed, um, and also getting what we, what we need to do. And uh, if eventually, of course, we will summarize all of these and also give our recommendations to the CCB. Uh, on how to m- move on with the format, with the contents. Is there anything missing? Um, uh, this dialogue again, that we will probably have continuously, but there will also be a formal assessment of that at some point.
And you know, my ultimate goal, as I mentioned, is to maybe make this a standard training for all bud tenders. So that final report hopefully can maybe touch on that if possible, just what, what that, what that might entail. I think we'll just know more after we run this experiment, how many people sign up and all this data. So, yeah.
Yeah, we can add that to this slide for completion. Um, yeah. Any comments or questions on the evaluations? Still, we're almost getting to the end, um. We, yeah.
So we have five trainings. And as we were talking, I was thinking, you know. How there may need to be, I, I don't even know, maybe, you know what, I'll just leave it to my, I don't want to overcomplicate the situation. I was thinking maybe you could have, you know, for a recertification in advanced level that's even higher, you know, uh, but yeah. So that, you know, there's the, the basic level, like, you know, one-on-one class and there's like the two-on-one, three-on-one.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Different levels of competency.
Yeah. So, all right. It can just be a thing that we talk about, you know, down the road is.
Definitely. We need to see if people want that.
Right.
Um, yeah. And also what, what problems it's going to solve for, it's a very interesting point.
But I, I think the feedback that we receive will determine the appetite for more advanced learning. As well as what that learning looks like over time. So I think that that can be well informed with um, many reports.
Great. All right. So uh, we want some opportunity for um, asking each other questions. Um, Matthew, do we have any questions from our side at this point? For the state?
Uh, specific questions? No, I think um, I'll sit back and listen and learn and then if any, you know, questions come to mind, I'll certainly chime in.
You know, I, we, we touched on this already. I know it's an aggressive timeline, um, for you all, um. You know, I, I think we have a responsibility to engage with the Department of Health on any time we're implementing a. Program about how the use of cannabis is communicated to consumers. They generally have their own process internally about how to evaluate that. Um, I prepared them to receive this draft curriculum. And evaluate it as quickly as possible. So we'll try and minimize the time that draft sits with us. Um, and hopefully we can really hit those timeline milestones, knowing that the first training. Uh, may be, you know, the most basic and it may evolve over time. It's not really a question, but I think. You know, it's, it's important for us as we start to see medical dispensary, you know, patients lose access, that we start standing these, um. Medical use endorsements up as quickly as possible.
Yeah, makes sense. Uh, so to that end, um, and, and also having a, a regular, yeah, time of contact. Maybe we can take this offline that we can see how frequently we're going to meet, um, to keep each other updated.
Yes.
On the status. We can do that after this meeting.
Melissa, you're gonna have to administer this, you know, um, enrollment. You know, certifications, updating our systems. Do you have any, you know, technical questions, um, for Canify at this point? I know we like, things will come up as we start actually. You know, building this thing, um, that we can answer down the road, but anything that maybe comes to mind now?
Um, I, not really, I, we, we touched on the part about certificates and stuff like that. Uh, and I think that's sort of what we, when we started building this out envisioned that. Once there was this extra training for people, um, that there would be some sort of certification that people would get. So we sort of updated our employee ID card applications to allow for people to give us that. In order to show that they've completed the training and have that little, uh, and can get that little medical endorsement. On their employee ID card, um. So as long as that is still what's being envisioned, I think that's our biggest technical thing. Um, and, and I don't know if, you know, we'll be able to. Get some sort of, you know, after each, after each training session. If there, if we're able to have like a list of the people that. Were, that participated and, you know, if they've passed their assessment, stuff like that, just so that we can verify if need be. Um, that somebody has passed and done what they needed to do and, you know, if this person says, oh, I took the training. And then we look at the list and, well, you took it, but there is no, you know, past assessment, whatever it may be. Um, I think those are the two main things that we would want to see from an administrative standpoint.
Good. Yeah, we have some questions also on the enrollment.
Right, yeah, sure, please.
Yeah, uh, because um, especially um, in light of adding questions on the accessibility of the course. Uh, it would be good to already receive the enrollment lists way in advance, um. Maybe two or three weeks in advance so that we can uh, send them this, this test and that they can. Yeah, that we know what to expect, who is going to require what, uh, when we set this up.
So I think on that, I think when we have the first date of the first class. We can publicize it widely and it'll be first come, first served until we hit that number sixty.
Yeah.
Uh, which is the maximum enrollment and um, we can give you kind of rolling updates as to the, you know, who's signed up.
Yeah.
Um, I think that's workable. As far as setting dates, do either you or board members have a preference between just having these, um. Kind of a regular intervals, maybe every three months, or do we want to front load just given, well, we don't know what the interest in the first one will be. Uh, if we exceed interest, we may want to have two kind of back-to-back almost, uh, because, you know, again, you can't. Really get your medical use endorsement up and running until you have at least one employee that can be available. Um, so, uh, we have a hundred and ten retail locations in the state, um. Certainly, I don't think all of them are going to want the medical use endorsement, but we may see interest, um. And, um, but it, but, so, do we want to, do we want to do set intervals or we will just want to see how enrollment goes for the first one?
It seems like.
My.
Sorry, go ahead.
My, my first thought on that is that I think that there's going to be, um, a big interest at first. And I have a feeling that that first class might fill up rather quickly. Um, so it may be worth looking at getting a set date for that first class, looking at how quickly it fills up. Um, and then maybe doing the second one very shortly after and then going to regular intervals. Um, because it's not just. It, there will be a lot of retailers that are seeking medical endorsements, having their employees sign up. Um, but it, somebody doesn't have to be with a retail establishment that has a medical endorsement. Or even with a set retail establishment to get their employee ID cards. So there may be people who are interested in getting this certification to make themselves more available for more. to make themselves more available for more job opportunities. Um, so that would be, that would be my suggestion there.
I think Melissa's, uh, both Melissa's points are were spot on, but especially the second one. Can considering we don't tie the bud tender to the retail establishment, we can't, unless we want to hold slots for retailers specifically. It's really hard to tell what the interest is gonna be. My suggestion was gonna be hold one and kind of see how quickly that fills up. If Melissa, who is kind of managing uh those m- m- medical use endorsement kind of um you know, interests in in a, in applying, feels that way, I'm I'm happy to divert, defer to her best judgment on on how many we kind of front load, um. That makes sense.
Yeah, I one hundred percent agree with what Melissa proposed.
The other thing that we always struggle with is how do you maximize partici- participation in a way that's convenient for the students? Um, do you do these at night? You know, you will, people that maybe don't have childcare lose that opportunity. Do you do it during the day while people work during the day, you know? Is the, is your retail store gonna let you kind of take time off work to do this? Um, do you have thoughts about, um, day versus, you know, after hours, or do you care, or is it impossible for you guys to do after hours?
No, no, uh, what we need to do is just know upfront what is going to happen. And um, uh, no time is convenient for everyone, so what we could even do is um provide, um, yeah.
The first two, maybe like on alternates.
Yeah.
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 Yeah, okay. I'm sure there's a, oh, go ahead.
Sorry, I just have a question on what the vision is for people signing up, if it's going to be something where we publish the date and they sign up through the program, or if they're going to be signing up through us, and then we are giving you the list of, okay, here were the first sixty people that wanted to sign up.
I think the latter. I think the latter, Melissa. I know that's more work for you and your team, but.
No, that's all right. That just tells me I need to make a web form, and I'll start doing that.
Yeah. I think, you know, us finding, you know, being able to verify that the people that are signing up are actually employees, you know, have an employee ID card, us verifying their status, I think would be helpful.
Awesome. Love it.
Well, I think there are any number of logistical issues that we're gonna encounter along the way. I don't think, but if there's, if there are big buckets of questions that you have for us or that CCB has for you, um, this is a good time to bring them up. No?
Yeah, go ahead, Matthew.
Oh, I was just gonna say, I think it'll be important to manage expectations. Um, you don't want to antagonize these potential, you know, enrollees before they even begin the program. And um you just want to weigh the pros and cons of um providing ample opportunity versus, you know, if sometimes if you give too much choice and then they don't get their choice, then they, again, feel like they haven't been serviced. So there are upsides and downsides to, um, you know, providing choice and um it's really important just to manage expectations going in.
Yeah, and potentially also address this to dispensary managers so that they can facilitate the availability.
Yeah.
That's great. All right. Well, and I think uh it's probably helpful for us to designate a single point of contact for you. I know you you've been working with Sonia or just the contract terms, um, but it's probably helpful for us to have someone that, you know, will always pick up the phone when you call and.
Yeah.
So, okay. Um, so we'll do that.
We can talk about this, yeah?
Yes.
Um, maybe offline, uh, so yeah, if there are no questions anymore, I think um just the next meeting, we can probably schedule, um.
Sure.
Later or?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Later's fine.
Okay, it's fine. And then uh just to uh summarize, we will provide you um with a proposal of the the content, content level, competency level. Um, we have talked about timelines of providing the first version late next month. Um, have a review done, uh, schedule a training uh with Melissa. Um, so that we can see how many people sign up and then take it from there with regards to um the timeline of the recertification, et cetera. And retaking the test, et cetera.
That's great.
Good.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right. We are ahead of schedule, which is great, um. Uh, Melissa, one thing that I thought might be useful, but maybe since we don't have members of the public that have joined, we'd be walking through the medical use endorsement guidance. Have we done a uh peer networking event on that at all? That you know of? I didn't, I don't see on our YouTube page.
Not since our newest, not since our newest guidance has come out, um, regarding the um the governing documents and and that stuff. They're published, but we haven't done a peer networking on them.
Oh, is that a worthwhile use of our last couple of minutes? I know it's not really relevant for um Dr. Clumpers and team. But uh for people that are watching this after the fact.
Yeah, I think the idea of holding a separate peer networking on that is something we've discussed. Uh, the way we land, uh, the way we left it with Patrick is that we wanted to make sure we had all of the documents available. So we are finalizing, I think, it's just the drive-through component that's left. So the plan was, once the medical endorsement guidance and governing documents guidance, plus the drive-through guidance all in place, Patrick will hold a formal uh event, and I think that would make the most sense, and that might be as soon as next month.
Great, okay, then let's not do it now. Um, that's fine. Um, all right, well, um, again, no one from the public has joined, so I don't feel a need to do the public comment window that we moved to the ends. Um, so I will not do that. So the last thing on our agenda is an item, uh, completely unrelated to the medical use endorsement. We're just taking advantage of having a special meeting to discuss um our lawsuit, uh, our advertising lawsuit um with the board members and our general counsel and our executive director. Um, so everyone else should feel free to sign off, um, and then Julie, do you have a motion to go into executive session?
I do. Thank you for your time, Matthew and and Linda. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Um, I move that the board enter executive session pursuant to one VSA subsection three thirteen A one E to discuss a legal matter with our counsel, as premature general public knowledge would place the board at substantial disadvantage.
And I will say.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Hi. Okay, all right, um.
Pepper, if Kyle doesn't jump back over, I think we have a quorum, so I think we can take action.
Didn't want to have him feel left out, um, but uh, yeah, um, so just as a time check, uh, it's um Tuesday, uh, okay. Tuesday, August twenty-six, twenty-twenty-five, this is a special meeting of the cannabis trogords, twelve twenty-five P M. And the only thing left on our agenda is to adjourn, so I will do that. Thank you. All right, see you guys later.
See ya.